The flag of the United States of America and the true republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own.
Thank you.
A few big questions about the way the Coalition to have a debate with Board of Education candidates on Thursday, 22nd through the 6th and 10th again. Check the schedule on the building, don't see any conflicts with the schedule. If Mayor Council will approve that, that would be something that they would be very happy with. I'd like to remind our residents that on Thursday, 10th again, there will be a ceremony at the 9/11 memorial to recognize the tragedy in the U.S. parish. The town suffered from a flash flood over the Labor Day weekend. Sat with our municipal engineer after I toured the town on Labor Day, and it appears that we received over four inches of rain in a very short amount of time. We had data from the monitoring system at the brook next to Grantford Park, and the water level in that brook went from 1.37 feet to over eight feet in a short amount of time. Unfortunately, many of our streets that had never received floodwaters received flooding. We've received some complaints from residents who had flooded basements, like tore some of their homes. It's tragic, it's an isolated storm. Our engineer is looking into some options, although when you get such a tremendous rainfall in a short amount of time, he said that the possibilities could be very difficult. Your final plans for the Halloween event is planned for Saturday, October 25th, with a rain date on Saturday, 26th. There are flyers for the public here, and we hope all will attend. It's a well-attended and fun event for our children, which many enjoy this year.
Thank you.
Yes.
I was informed by the Home Improvement Program from the County of Essex that they will have a -- monies will be available if you want to fix your homes for the entire township of Belleville. You have to make the income guidelines, which I understand, but it's really a good program if you need fixing of your homes. What I'm asking, Mr. Estidino, is, is there any way in which we can inform the town by a robo-call, to, if we could have a meeting at the senior center, anyone that would be interested in attending?
Well, I think that program would be to senior residents only. I don't think it's open to any resident. I think there might be a major picture.
No, 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 there's not.
Really?
No.
It's open to any resident?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, it's called the Essex County Home Improvement Program.
Okay.
It's funded through a community development block grant and provides loans to lower moderate-income home loans who occupy one to three families. So, you know, maybe a robo-call would help if someone would, you know, I'm sure there are people here that could use monies to fix their homes. All right, you let me know on that. I received a letter from a complainant of what you just said, Mr. Estidino, about flooding. And I understand that you were there that day. I didn't feel well, but I'm glad that you and Councilman Kennedy went. But I remember when, a few years ago, Mr. Qualteri, he did a program where he helped. They had flooding in my area on Geraldo and on Belmont, with Belmont Avenue, and by putting new pipes in, it alleviated it. I have this letter that was a tearjerker that she sent, Amelia Lima of Frederick. I'll try to be quick. "I'm writing on behalf of my sister who lives on 20 Frederick over 20 years. When the rain came, her garage and basement was flooded with over four feet of water. This is the sixth time. They lost everything again. Fire department came and hunted them out and checked their gas and electric to avoid the destruction." Now, what, this is their words, "The town came in and nothing got better. She just got tired of going to the town and she lost hope. Is there anyone at all to complain to, to get results? She's frustrated and angry. When the garbage truck came carrying her belongings, she just cried. I wish that someone would have had the time to visit and see the damage." I did go and I did, you know, I looked at it, and her name is Elizabeth Gabrielle, and her daughter is Laura, and they only have at 20 Frederick Street. So, anything that could be done there. Now, I know they did have that other four feet of water on Belmont. Good. But it's really ironic that from Franklin Street to Belmont Ave to Cross Street, nothing floods, but from, what was the number, 277 to North Gabon, there was floods. So, again, if Mr. Haritz can look into this situation and see maybe larger pipes could be had. Also, I'm looking for recycling calendars for our civic association because, you know, they only get one, and some people have two and three family homes. And what else? I understand that someone was hired and fired. I'm hearing rumors, was someone hired and then fired?
That would be a personal matter, and we're going to discuss it.
Okay, so, when you have time and you could discuss it personally, I, as a councilwoman, would like to know what happened. All right, thank you.
John.
Yeah. Yeah, Catholic, a couple of coaches called me last week about the high school. There's a railing that's down at the stadium. Could you make sure that somebody takes care of that for, I guess, by the next football game?
Based upon your contact with the U.S., they have to allow a lot of funding to set the condition.
How was it? Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Joe.
Wait just for a second through the chair. Do you know what the income threshold was on that stuff at all?
Uh, yeah, I think I do. I'll give you the sheet. If you read this, I'll get the front of the sheet from this. You take my top part off.
It's just the income threshold.
It's a pretty good income threshold, I think.
Oh, probably.
Just take the top part of it. They used to do that in town.
Yeah, it's thirty, it's like thirty thousand, thirty thousand alone, up to thirty thousand. I'm sorry to give us. Because I remember the last time we had something like this, the income threshold was on thirteen thousand.
Oh, no, 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 I think it's something thirty or more. They have monies available, so.
There are restrictions with programs like that, though. If a home is sold within a certain timeframe.
Ten years.
Ten years, yeah.
Ten years, then you don't have to pay for it.
Kevin, real quick, I'm going to sing lines of the flooding Continental in Carpenter. I actually have a picture of that. I know, I know, I was there. And I know we ended up putting a bigger pipe in there, and this goes back maybe, I don't know, Vic, was it about eight, nine years ago, seven?
It's been a while now.
Yeah. And everything seemed to be going good until we put the new restrictive flow, you know, put the restrictive flow sewer covers on it. Can we see if there's anything that can give us a little better flow there? Because I think that was, I mean, I understand you're not going to cover every flood, and that was a lot of water in a short period of time. But this was not the first time, right? This has happened a couple of times.
Right, this is probably the worst I've ever seen.
Yeah, that's definitely the worst I've ever seen. I ended up in the middle of it, so. Just let me know what's going on with that. As far as the abandoned houses on Jefferson, Continental, and a couple other places, have we heard anything back from banks and identifying banks? And I know there was a question there that Frankie had asked me about LexisNexis and getting access to that. Is that, would that help him to identify who owns these things?
Contact, but I gave them the name of a war firm who represented the lender on that particular property. There's files from the war firm representing the lender that they no longer have a risk against fire against the property, and that's the property owner who was in foreclosure, worked out of foreclosure. Sometimes what happens is when there's a foreclosure.
Is this from Continental or?
Just.
Jefferson. Is he going to do anything? Is he going to help you do anything? That's the question next.
There are files levied against the property. The landlord has been, failed to come into court. A bench warrant's been issued, it might, it's what I believe.
Right.
This department will have to locate and remove that.
The last thing is.
Clean the leads on some of these properties.
They go on some of the stuff, right?
But again, in this particular case, the bat hole, I believe there's a gaping hole in the roof.
Yes.
Okay?
And other things, faces swollen, all kinds of stuff.
Right. It's not truly a structure that is indeed a demolition, although it's a nice.
Getting close to it.
You know, eventually you could get to that point. As you can see, the one on Graylock, you know, that, unfortunately, the deal was something that fell through the wayside. And one reported back in the June meeting that the contract was solid. Then in the 11th hour, unfortunately, they couldn't resolve the issues. So, we sent out the Public Works crew. We put a clean lead on the property. They cleaned all the debris on the yard, and they support the housing, okay? We're making every attempt to contact that lender again. There is new legislation out there, I've been advised of. We're making every attempt to, these clean leads are in process, but they take a long time.
Understood.
Let's pay up our resources, you know?
You know, my, my hope is that we can help expedite this, and I think if we give somebody, either in the legal department or whatever, even the building co-official or something, access to LexisNexis to do some research to find out who the banks are and, you know, get us to them quicker, because we got a bunch of them around town, and it's not right. The Les Benatton. I repeat myself, I'm getting old, eh? The Les Benatton. Last week, I got a couple of calls, and I think these here, there is a car on Carpenter that has no engine in it that's been sitting there a while. I would just appreciate it if the police could get it out of there, because we need parking spaces over there, and it's kind of holding up. It's across from the first circle, please?
Yes.
I'm good, yep.
Kevin, I only have one thing. You mentioned the Board of Education wants to hold, somebody wants to hold a debate. Maybe Tom could answer this. They want to use our senior citizens. Now, I don't think any town building could be used for, for, you know, for an, something like that.
Political stuff.
For political information.
Don't worry, that's, that's an interesting concern, and I don't have an answer for you now, I'll have to think that one through, but it would not appear at first blush to me to be merely political. That would be something that would be, this is a democratic community, this would be something that would be innitically in the best interest of the township for people to be able to come out to a certain area and listen to the candidates. I, I don't know if that would be, if there would be much of, I think they've been held at the, at the high school, in the PAFs, and I think they have now. And it's almost kind of like the same premise.
I wouldn't consider the high school township building. Like, I know they held them at the women's school also, but it's not owned by the town. This building is. And that's the only reason I'm asking. I mean, I don't want it to open up the doors for somebody else.
You mean to set a precedent?
Yes.
Like I said, that's a.
I'm sure you'll check that.
Question, question, question for me.
Okay. Thanks, Tom. Special action.
Public hearing on the Amendment of the 2014 Municipal Budget. Mayor, decline the public hearing on the Municipal Budget Amendment for 2014. The amendment was approved by the governing body on August 12, 2014, was advertised in public prior by law September 4, 2014, together with notice of hearing for this time. Current copies have been made available to the public. A supply is here for anyone's desire of a copy.
Anyone who was not secure a copy of the budget amendment may now do so. Before opening this hearing, I wish to outline the proceedings. Each person desiring to be heard will rise and give to her name and address before speaking. I will recognize one speaker at a time in order of rising as nearly as I can. Address all questions to the chair. Where necessary, they will refer to individual members of the governing body or municipal offices. Questions must be defined solely to the Municipal Budget Amendment. School or county matters are not proper subjects of this hearing. They cannot be discussed or answered here tonight. I now declare open the public hearing on the Municipal Budget Amendment for 2014. Thank you, Mayor.
If Mr. President Tony Malpas said, "Mayor and Council, I see the handout you gave, the total general appropriation going up at a quarter million dollars. How did that affect the tax increase?"
I think it would reduce some tax. No effect of the tax increase. No effect.
And the spending going up to quarter million, there's no type of a tax increase?
There's no tax increase.
The expenditures went up outside the cap because of the tax appeals that the division mandated that we provide, $250,000. We offset by a reduction of the appropriations inside the cap by like $250,000. So, the total appropriations are the same as they were at introduction time. And that's why it's affecting the tax rate.
Well, I was going to ask that, under eight general appropriations, item one, we have mentioned a refunding tax appeal.
Right.
$250,000. What exactly is that?
What that is, is during 2013, the town had to refund in excess of a million dollars for tax appeals. Normally, you're allowed to raise that over a three or five-year period with application to the division. We were hoping to start raising that in 15 and go forward for three or five years. On adaptive division with the application, they rendered that restart issue in 2014 for a minimum of $250,000. So, this year, that's why $250,000 is in the eighth year. They have to then, I apply with the division to see about the remaining balance as to whether we can do it over the next three years, five years, or two years.
So, possibly, we're going to have to do this every year for whatever, two or five years.
At least, at least two more years.
Well, Council, I mean, that's to clear, because we're getting more and more tax appeals, to clear indication that our residents can't afford the high taxes. But we've got to do some.
Do you have any questions on that?
Cut spending.
Okay.
We've got to do that, because there's too many other tax appeals and foreclosures. One of my neighbors just lost their house. So, but this is, I'm sticking to the budget. It's what we complained about, now we see it in black and white in the budget, how it's affecting us. So, you've got to do something about it.
Thank you.
I observe no further applications from the fly, we're not standing motion to close the hearing.
Mayor, moving the hearing on the Budget Amendment. Second. Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
I have a resolution regarding another amendment to the budget. The quick move is a resolution.
Resolution to amend the Municipal Budget for 2014, whereas the local municipal budget for the year 2014 was approved on the 10th day of June, 2014, and whereas the public hearing on said budget has been held as advertised, and whereas it is desired to amend said approved budget now, therefore be it resolved by the Township Council, Council of Belleville, County of Essex, that the following amendments to the approved budget of 2014 be made. Total capital improvements excluded from caps from $100,000 to $108,500,000. Oh, total generate, general appropriations excluded from caps, $7,963,681,31 to $7,972,188.131.
I have a resolution for another amendment to the budget.
That's what I just said.
That's it?
That's it.
That's it? Give me a second.
We need a motion in a second.
Second.
Make a motion, make a second. Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes. Another life motion? Another set of budgets?
Resolution to adopt.
Resolution to adopt the budget.
I am making a motion, resolution, making a motion to adopt the budget.
Second.
Resolution to adopt the budget. If resolved by the governing body of the Township of Belleville, County of Essex, that the budget hearing set forth is hereby adopted and shall constitute an appropriation for gross escapes and the sums given set forth as appropriations and authorization of the amount of $44,915,568.13 for municipal purposes and $941,742 for minimum library tax.
Will people please shut their phones off? Thank you. I'm moving for its adoption. Second. Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Resolution adopted. We have one special action.
I have one more question.
Yes, resolution to amend the 2014 capital budget.
Moving. Second. Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Resolution adopted.
Communications.
And we request receipt for permission to conduct a block party on Bee Street between Reddah Parkway and Floyd Street on Saturday, September 13.
Making a motion to approve as well, they do the conditions.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
And we request receipt for permission to conduct a block party on Manhattan Place on Saturday, September 20.
Making a motion to approve as well, they do the conditions.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders number one for introduction, bond orders provided for various capital improvements in and by the Township of Belleville, the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $1,064,800, therefore authorizing issuance of $1,014,900, bond remotes to the Township to finance part of the cost.
Making a motion, move for introduction.
Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders number two for introduction, bond orders provided for reconstruction of various roads in and by the Township of Belleville, the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating $2,811,000, therefore authorizing the issuance of $2,758,264, bond remotes to the Township to finance part of the cost thereof.
Making a motion, move for introduction.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders number one for public hearing, in order to amend revised general ordinances of the Township of Belleville, Chapter 8-16, handicap parking spaces.
Making a motion, move for public hearing.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders number one for public hearing, in order to amend revised general ordinances of the Township of Belleville, Chapter 8-16, handicap parking spaces.
Making a motion, move for public hearing.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Making a motion, close public hearing.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders number one for second and final reading, in order to amend revised general ordinances of the Township of Belleville, Chapter 8-16, handicap parking spaces.
Making a motion, move for final adoption.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders is adopted. Orders number two for public hearing, in order to amend revised general ordinances of the Township of Belleville, Chapter 8-6A, stop sign intersection designated.
Making a motion, open it for public hearing.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders number two for second and final reading, in order to amend revised general ordinances of the Township of Belleville, Chapter 8-6A, stop sign intersection designated.
Making a motion, to final adoption.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Kimball?
Yes.
Orders number two for second and final reading, in order to amend revised general
Make a motion to, to final adoption. Second. Quick approval.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schtrumhober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted. Ordinance number three for public hearing, bond or refunding bond ordinance providing for payment of, payment of amounts to others for taxes levied in by the township of Bellville, the county of Essex, New Jersey appropriating one hundred and seventy-seven thousand bond notes to the township for the financing of the cost thereof.
Make a motion, open it for public hearing. Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schtrumhober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel?
Yes.
Yes, can you explain this, says the, the line repayment of amounts to others for taxes levied in one million seven, what exactly is this?
This is a refunding bond for tax appeals, refunding of taxpayers to property owners in town who file tax appeals, uh, we get a five to seven year period, when they are awarded a refund through our tax appeal via judgment, municipalities obligated to pay them a refund. When the municipality pays a taxpayer back, we pay back a portion, which is approximately fifty percent of the average taxpayer would take. We don't get credit back from the board of ed for the amount that we are obligated to refund. You do get credit back, you state with the deficit credit from the Essex County, uh, portion of the taxpayer. So what you have here is a refunding bond for tax appeals that have been outstanding.
Uh, what's, how many are paid back, is it?
Well, as Mr. Ficke stated earlier, uh, we are obligated to pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of the twenty fourteen budget, and we'll, we'll determine next year whether that lasts three years, starting twenty fifteen, or two years, or perhaps five years. It'll be up to the department to assess on that decision. At very minimum, it'll be two, and the maximum it could be is five.
Once again, council, I mean, here's proof our taxes are too high, and people can't afford it, right here, a million seven, that the rest of the taxpayers have to pull out of their pocket to pay for these successful appeals, and it's getting more and more, it's been going on, at least for the last five to seven years.
When you look at some communities, Mr. Bennett, it's already similar in size to the township of Bellville, you'll see that the Montclair Township bonded almost five million dollars last year, and some smaller West Essex communities bonded nine million dollars, um, with only twenty-two hundred lineups.
I know, Mr. Esposito, but on the altar seven, and my mother's tell us, I don't care what they doing next door, these are the rules in our house, so let's pay attention to our whole thing. I don't care, other towns got bigger problems, and some have other problems, but we are addressing our problems in both, and it's too high.
Ben, the deordance.
And, well, this, this deordance, her taxes are too high, and here we are, we're going in, this is not the first one they get passed, I, I think we have some others that we passed previous on some of these.
We did have one other, uh, and it was for the largest, one of our top ten taxpayers, who was successful, unfortunately, in winning a very large refund. It's not uncommon today, if you study what's going on, Atlantic City, this year bonded two hundred million dollars for refunding the tax appeals. It's an unfortunate, uh, situation, as a result of the economic downturn in two thousand and eight, property owners throughout the state have encountered, uh, value reductions. The township of Bellville has conducted in-house reassessments and compliance plans that have been as proactive as possible, to the tune of when the DCA received the application, our bond council, uh, notified us that they were very pleased that the township had been proactive, almost a model community when compared to other, uh, five hundred and sixty-five municipalities in the state of New Jersey. Some towns don't look at their assessments for ten or twenty years, but if you look at how Bellville has taken a proactive approach, we were devalued at the height of the market in two thousand and eight, and in recognizing the market correction that occurred as a result of the economic decline in the nation, we reduced assessments in two thousand and ten with a compliance plan, we reduced them again in eleven with a reassessment, and then in twelve and thirteen conducted other compliance plans. Our ratable base was, was reduced by over seven hundred million dollars to recognize that. If that reduction didn't take place, we could have been refunding up to ten million dollars as a result of that seven hundred million dollar ratable base that was already reduced. So, unfortunately, there is no municipality that's going to escape refunding, it's literally impossible. If you look at one hundred million dollars annually collected by the tax office, believe me, sir, I do recognize the fact that it's your taxes and everyone else's that will be funding this refunding, but when you compare us to other communities, I, I respect the analogy, but we have been very proactive and conservative when we look at how money is refunded and spent for tax appeals.
Well, I, I've seen the reduction in the assessments, but the problem is, we haven't seen the respective reduction in the spending, in municipal and the board of education spending, so there's our problem, you know, we're, we're reducing the value of our property, we're reducing the assessment, which makes our equity lower, but we keep spending more and raising our taxes, it's a collision course.
Well, the only good news, sir, is that as a result of the change in the economy in the real estate market, moving in the right direction, you will more than likely see increased rent increases, and as a result of the hard work that we do here with the development committee, along with Mayor Kimmel and myself, you will see new ratables remitted to our ratable base in the coming years, that will hopefully help us with future budgets.
I don't believe it, and just, you know, I don't know if I brought it while you were the town manager, but I brought you forward, council, and treated council, a big star leisure survey was done about ten years ago.
Ben, okay.
The towns with the biggest increase in ratables had the biggest tax increases because they demanded more services, so I don't want to hear that increased rate.
Ben, you know, I know this, I know that's not the ordinance.
Well, it is.
Yeah, make a, anybody else? Make a motion, close public hearing. Second. Quick approval.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schtrumhober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel? Ordinance number three for second and final reading, refunding bond ordinance providing for payment of amounts to others for taxes levied in by the township of Bellville, the county of Essex, New Jersey appropriating one million seven hundred and thirty-five thousand bond notes to the township for financing the cost thereof.
Make a motion, move for final adoption. Second. Quick approval.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schtrumhober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Make a motion, open public participation. Second.
Councilmember Cosrally?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robell?
Yes.
Schtrumhober?
Yes.
Mayor Kimmel?
Yes.
Fellas, Grand Canyon, Mount Prospect, they're here. This morning, I was walking up to Bloomfield to my son's house to take his kids to school, and I passed number ten school, and Councilman Kennedy was there too, across the street, and I heard him yelling about the problem there. Somebody is going to get killed. They're double parked all the way up to where the convenience store is. Now, my grandkids go to school in Bloomfield, they have a similar problem over there, where these cars were parked up to where the crossing guard was, and double parked. The police went and they put cones a hundred feet back that they can't park there while school is in session, and they enforce it. If you dare try, they ticket you or tell you. And there's another school in Bloomfield on Broad Street where the police put a sign up, this is for drop off and pickup, do not leave your car. That is bad, and it's not only that school ten, I see that because I can't stand on that. A lot of the schools in town, something has to be done, one of those kids is going to get killed, really, really bad.
Bennett, would you agree with you, when we had the police chief in early, you managed to talk to him, we're going to put up an officer up there at that school ten tomorrow.
But something has to be done where they can't park, this is really, really bad.
Also encourage the chief to put our digital message board out there, so residents know that the enforcement will take place, they will be ticketed if they don't comply with other regulations. The deputy mayor has wrote this to my attention on numerous occasions, and he'll see some police action. Unfortunately, as a result of that, some residents will get tickets.
Well, then don't worry, because I have to, I spoke to my school eight years ago, and we made a complaint, they enforced it, people got ticketed, but they didn't do it anymore. And I wanted to ask, is it illegal, since we had a snowstorm last year, many of them, to have cones in front of your house for the entire year?
Nope.
Okay. This, I've seen quite a few, but this one particular person on my block down there, double avenue, I called the police, he's got a handicap parking space, never parks there, parks in his driveway, and has four cones in front of his house, the street cleaner can't even clean the street.
He doesn't have any, there's no street, he has no way to park in that space.
Now, the police go up and down the street, they don't say to do something, I mean, it's, it's right there.
What, what's the word?
All right, and I wanted to ask, what is the situation with school one? Are they going to proceed with that? What is they doing with that, to build it?
I think we're negotiating with them.
Oh, yeah, we have the developers agreeing, it has to be finalized, the most of the developers are agreeing, it's finalized, you should see some construction activity hopefully by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Hi, Susan Robell, working on drive, I'm also the principal of school ten, just have a question. Last year, um, we had a gentleman in the back of our school who had the police shut off the street. Now, there's an opening there where people used to park on Smallwood and walk their children down, but the police actually shut off that street.
I don't know why they did that, I saw that today.
You saw that today?
Yeah, that's the, the, the sheriffs, they complained about it, and they closed the street off, I, I don't know what power they have.
And they closed the street off, so all the parents cannot park that there, so they have to park in, there's no, there's virtually no parking when they do that. So, um, I don't know what the problem is, it's ten minutes in the morning, ten minutes after school, if that street is open, the entrance is there, the parents stand up by the fence and their children go, so I don't know how anyone else.
Kevin, can you make sure those cones disappear tomorrow morning?
Right, I don't know how anyone else with power to close the street, I'd like to know that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean Hank Carpenter Terrace, um, Mr. Robell spoke about the problem that's, uh, has developed about the parking, I want to give you a few more details. Mick, I don't know his last name, the Irish guy, owns number twelve, and he's been twelve thirty, there were four legal spots to park. One of the tenants from thirteen put a car there for a full year, it has no motor, and it was there, he got evicted two months ago. Since then, that car was pushed onto Carpenter Street and parked like for two weeks at a time, and the only way they move it is by the sheen. Now, Mick has made several complaints, and on two occasions, I think he even talked to the police officer that came, but did nothing, so the car is still there. Last, when he came to me, I called Wednesday, and you know I am a district leader, so I have some power.
Yes, you are.
And guess what? Nothing happened. So I went to Joe Gayville, we went up the hill, we went up, whatever they call that, up.
Up the chain.
Yes, up the chain, and I put it in Steve's hands, guess what? It's still there. Yes, it's a, it's a Honda, H-O-N-D-A, not a Hyundai.
Probably not.
Yeah, it's a, it's a white one, and a, a dark top.
With no angel.
Jeff, let's get it over with. There's no angel.
A, A eighty-four D P X.
That's unbelievable, because.
A eighty-four D P X.
License plate?
Yeah, license, yeah, I'm sorry.
I was down the shore for four days, and they told my car, we're in forty-eight hours.
Okay.
I had to come up and get it out.
Okay, you got that, Mr. Esposito?
I did, I.
Okay. You know, I don't know much, but I thought maybe he was a friend of the officers or something. It didn't seem like him, so, okay, I've got a question, um.
But I thought you were friends with the officers.
I am, I am, Victor Ratchett is my best friend, so, okay. Uh, I don't know whether it's the law or not, but there's a guy, I think he comes from ten or eleven, uh, I saw him a few times last month, he seemed to be, he, he seems like an auto mechanic, and he seems to be fixing cars during the day. Is that called a business?
Yep.
And we're in a residential area, I have to remind you.
Yeah, may go to the residential street.
Okay, excuse me, what happened now? He's doing it after midnight.
That sneaky son of a gun.
Yes.
Well, what happens when you call the police?
Well, it's after midnight, and guess nothing.
They don't stop working at midnight. All the cops, he shouldn't, how can you have people do this in your neighborhood after, they play the music after ten o'clock in my neighborhood, I go nuts.
You know what? I saw him during the daytime fixing it, and I was going to approach him, and he stopped doing it.
No, don't approach him, that's not your job.
Okay.
Don't let him hit you in the head with a mallet or something. Call the cops and tell them a man stricks some cars on the street, let them come up and investigate.
Okay, well, now, it, it came to me, so I'm, I'm, this is second hand, the guy says he was there from one thirty to three thirty Saturday night, and that's what he does for his work.
I don't know how to deal with all that.
He has a car, he's got this antique, now, I don't know, classic car, like, light blue with the white, like a convertible, never goes anywhere, but moves it every two days, and when the client comes, he moves that car out of the way, puts the client's car there, works on it, and then the client goes home and he, okay, the point is, if the cops could come through and catch him while he's doing that.
I'll be sure to notify the police. That's the same problem with dumping down a couple of works, if the cops can shut through, they got to catch him.
From your house, no?
Absolutely, we couldn't be.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Greg.
Oh, yeah.
On that note, I've been publicly complaining and called the police department right up a block, not only fixing cars in the street, but on the sidewalk, nothing gets done, and I think you know, Councilman Kennedy.
I gave them the ordinance, you have to move the car every two hours.
So, when you tell, when you tell a resident to call the police, I, not only I've called the police, I've been here, it's been recorded in the paper, my comments of public means, and, and I have right here in the cell phone, pictures of, on the sidewalk in the last two weeks, but nothing gets done, nothing gets done, just, and, and again, Ms. Dean Hank's made a comment, uh, maybe they're friends of somebody, but, um, resolution nineteen, if you're going to approve that case meeting, I would suggest you learn how to use the microphones, and you stop eating out there, so, before you go on these things. Resolution fifteen, uh, said the lease to Mill Street property to use and occupy a portion of township property, what exactly, what portion are you talking about? Fifteen, resolution fifteen.
Mr. Frank, I tell you, uh, that would be the, uh, new project adjacent to the senior building, they had made a request to put a sign on our property.
Oh, yeah, so you, I, I can hear you, Ken.
The new property adjacent to our senior building, the new, new project that I had made a request to put a sign on town property, that's what I.
I don't know.
Well, I mean, they got three quarters of the property now you gave to them, which I believe was illegal, because it's dedicated property, it's supposed to be used for only recreation, according to the restricted deed. Now, the last time you told me it was only, that, that's other part you gave, it was only a little part of the railroad when I went to Medford, it's not, Mr. Esposito, it's half of the parking area from the bill, and all the way out to Franklin Avenue, so, we keep giving them, foot by foot, by foot, are they eventually going to take over the senior citizen recreation building, because that's only, we're, we're left with one little quarter there. But that's only like, well, let's put one little quarter there. Why can't they got the other five, why can't they put it on there?
You know, Mr. Frank, they wanted some more visibility in there and I understand your concerns as you've not been shy about mentioning many, many times. Actually, this, this, there was a little bit of a metamorphosis to this because they wanted to put a trailer on our property also. And we had a, you know, a discussion about that, a gentleman's discussion, after which they withdrew that request and they want...
It's not, well, there's a trailer there already.
No, it's not on our property. It's not on our property. They wanted on our property. And then the first time we got this sign, the request for a licensing, which is not conveying an interest in real estate. It's just using it for that purpose, to exhibit a sign. Their sign was a bit out of code, that was brought to their attention and they harmonized it to fit with our code. Yes, it is, it's in a sense in a position on the land, but it's a minor one. I think the, I think it can be accurately characterized as a minor one and no, there will be no more approach on the senior citizen property.
The actions have not met the words we've heard here. We keep saying, no, but they keep getting a little more piece of property at all times. And we try to leave it in violation and I hope, I stopped buying lottery tickets. The last two months I bought them, if I get enough money, I'm gonna sue you and I'm sure I'll win.
Nice. And then your taxes won't.
The, uh... No, the taxes won't, the taxes go down. I said, but in regards to, Mr. Esposito said that the, where was the water rise from one point three feet to seven feet?
That was eight feet, say.
Where was that?
I'm sorry?
Where was that?
It was in the canal that runs along, the brook that runs along Mill Street by Nineteenth.
The Second River?
The Second River?
I was trusted these, the Second River for eighteen years. On seven a case, they asked me, I videotaped Belleville surrounding it during the rainstorm, I had the video of that tremendous water. And over the years, it's gotten worse. The Second River and, you know, what they do, they oversee the Second River basin. And it's not only here in Belleville, it's all over. And we know the reason. It's not for increased rainfall, it's increased development. And here in Belleville, our own zoning board continues to give variances that we're supposed to only build on two thirds of the property and leave it, and wow, okay. So you don't have thirty percent green area, we'll let you go away with twenty percent, we'll let you go away with ten percent. This is cumulative. Now, if any of you recall, as soon as, as the Geriatric Center was this big expanse of grass and dirt. In fact, one area was wetlands there, actual wetlands. The minute they built that park, what happened to Overhill Avenue and River Vale? All those people's basements started to flood because there was no more pervious areas or impervious area. And they elevated that site about ten, twelve feet. And they pushed all the water to those four people over there. It was so bad that the town had to spend money to put a pipe along River Vale. The people who were on the council at the time, a few years back. It's getting worse. The flooding is down in the valley got worse because that phony thing, that retention basin that they were gonna do, I questioned the engineer at the time, they don't know what they're doing. The thing doesn't retain a drop of water. The rainfall goes right into Franklin Avenue, into the sewer pipes and goes right down to the river. And that gentleman that died in the flood, like coming off from seven, a few years ago, this is the result of it. Now, all the impervious area and our picnic area on the senior citizen housing, all that grass over there is gonna be paved over with these eight restricted housing, you know, it's phony senior project and more macadam. Mr. Esposito, instead of going to eight, it's gonna be going to nine feet. We've got to keep some green area belt. Overdeveloping, you want this fifty-two story monster through the ice factory over there, more impervious area. You know, and nobody's paying attention to science. Mother Nature provides, it'll absorb the water. When you keep paving it, you keep pushing and you're gonna have more empty... You only got ten left of the twenty-five stories in the mall down there. So you're flooding them out and this is something we knew back in nineteen seventy-two. Me and the other merchant testified, that's a flood area, don't build on it. Nobody listens because the developers have a lot of grease to spread around. And so things slide very easy.
Want to finish up anything, please?
Yes, I'm begging you. Stop this overdevelopment. It is killing us, it is raising our tax. We've read the previous administration, oh, that's a park, they're gonna give us two point seven million dollars in new taxes. Ever since they built, I and the others have got the biggest tax increases in the history of Belleville since that development was built. And the more you build, the more taxes pour. So stop this outrageous development now in its tracks over there. You know, stop them from putting a sign up on our property. I object to it as a citizen and as a senior. And stop this overdevelopment, you are killing us.
Thank you. I'm sorry, sir. She's been up close already.
Okay. I'm having a problem on the sidewalk when I leave. The homeowner's insurance cannot, and then, you know, she says to me that I, you know, we have to fix. And I can't afford it, I have a picture over here, I could, oh, get freaked if somebody's gonna trip over there. And my budget's so bad, I don't know what to do.
Where is it?
It's at Twenty-Fourth Home, Seven in Belleville. The sidewalk over there is all bad. I could prove it to you guys, so right here.
What's causing it, is the trees causing it?
Can I approach you over here and I'm gonna show you? Thank you.
Who owns the property?
See, the homeowner's insurance cannot get this picture out.
Is this your property here, sir? Who owns the property?
Please, because I want the, she wants to be, it's kind of careful, okay? And also, you know, the tax, like the gentleman says over here, it's all, the girls as well. We appreciate it, please, I have to be that side.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sir. Diane, this is okay because I'm just wondering if the tax purposes, would it help to gain more, like I said in two thousand and eight? How I remember that is pretty much all the financial corporations kind of, you know, gave up on most of the middle class and poor in the world. And with that, if we want to rebuild, why not tax corporations like that more and give incentives to small businesses that do stay in town and do build your community up locally? I don't know if there's any way you can handle something like that and also...
You mean tax, pick out certain businesses and like motorcycle mall and tax them more?
No less, because he's building up the community. And more on like Chase, Wells Fargo.
Yeah, but we don't have them here.
Uh, we do have a little town though, you know? There's bad... I'm just suggesting, large corporation versus whoever is in town working for the town. I'm sure you guys can work on that, I'm just giving it a night. And also, Seattle was capable of raising the minimum wage to fifteen dollars an hour. I'm just wondering if you guys can call them and ask them how they did that? And see if there's any way to raise the minimum wage for us locally for a lot of single moms and parents out there who probably do need the money and who'd be capable of having less problems with taxes if they had to.
Thank you, sir. Florence.
Florence Pendle, Belleville Parkway. Something you don't want to hear, the senior building. Newark has building, senior buildings, they have people watching over them. Nobody can just come and go as they please in those buildings. You know, I think it's time some consideration was given to the two clubs that originated there. And we don't have our privacy there anymore. I recently had a party and I had to have aggravation and harassment from about four or five men. One who loves to harass me to begin with. And it cost me a lot of money, it ruined our party. I want somebody in that building to supervise whenever anybody is using that building. Right now, we have public works, the guys, when they come in, they do a tremendous job for us. I have nothing against them, but all these other times, I understand, we took federal money, I know all about federal money. And yet, you're not gonna tell me surrounding towns in all their buildings never had federal money. The only thing is, they don't advertise it. Where somebody shoots their mouth off about it in Belleville, that anybody could come in and use our building. Well, we are not the cleaning people. We want somebody there to watch that place whenever it's being used by anybody. If people are allowed to use it, fine, they are gonna be responsible for whatever happens. We fought a long time to get tables and chairs in that building. What we were living within there was a total disgrace, really a disgrace. We had chairs falling apart under us. Tables that went out for every darn street event or whatever got totally destroyed. Now, we got new things, we want it kept that way. We don't want anybody coming in there unsupervised to use the place. And they go out and then we don't know who caused what problem around there. We have only Friday for our meeting. We're not allowed to go in and out when anybody else is there. A Tuesday club has it another day and then there you have your AARP, you have the Italian American Club, designated days. There should not be anybody just to be able to come in and out of that place anytime they want to hang out, which they do. We got too many people hanging out in that building day after day after day. We want that place organized, watched over and supervised. That's the way it has to be. And again, you're right, Mr. Mayor, we have to be sure we don't get any political thing, although I am all for a debate on the Board of Education after the disgrace we face now for what has happened under an ex-president that's sitting up there. Alright, we'll take no responsibility for it. We want people to do the right thing, the citizens to be able to come in, yes, to enjoy the building and everything and whatever is allowed, but I want supervision. A trailer, yeah, they almost did put it on the concrete. They have enough property. If they're gonna build, they have to stay on their own property. We don't need that big old trailer, which almost rammed into the wall, by the way, when they were bringing it. We would add a big hole in the building and we wouldn't have any problems. As for a sign, they got their section that faces Mill Street, the grass up near the street. Keep it there, it doesn't have to be on our property. Why should it be on ours? Where are we supposed to put our cars? When we come down, we're gonna have a trailer, we're gonna have all of this equipment working down here and everything. We know construction has to go on. We can't stop it. But, please, don't throw us off the land, don't, don't dump on us, we're tired of it, we're really tired of it. We want consideration. We work very hard down there, whether or not anybody knows it, we seniors work very hard down there. Especially when we're doing parties, bus rides and everything else. Because what else do they have? If we didn't have that entertainment for them and everything, I don't see anybody throwing us a party down there and saying we're gonna pay the bill. We work very hard to raise money to add parties for these people. And we're not asking for anything from the town. Consideration, stay away from our property and please, leave us alone, that's all.
Yes, Tom Murphy on Jefferson Street. I come to before you people about a year ago regarding the house across the street at sixty-four Jefferson. And that house is falling apart even worse than it was. The front porch steps are broken. As a matter of fact, I went up there the other day to take some of the things that they trouble with for advertising and that. The bottom step is broken completely. I got some tape from my neighbor, caution tape, and blocked it all off because somebody's gonna get hurt on that. Especially, well, they don't deliver to me anymore, they're on the stops. But I wanted to put tape around the whole house, but they didn't think it was a good idea. But like I say, I don't know what's going on.
That's what, that's what you were just talking, we were talking about that before, Tom.
Why can't we tear it down?
What, what happened, again, you talked to the attorneys?
Ultimately, what I gather with that property is that the property owner is in default, is running the situation with the lender. It cured the risk payments on the property.
So the guy that owns the property supposedly paid the back...
Whatever, taxes, right?
Taxes and...
Or he wanted to get a mortgage modification.
So he owns the house again supposedly, right? So that's what we're trying, we're trying to get him recorded now.
Who owns the house?
Do we know the guy's name, have we gotten the name of it? Okay, come, if you get a chance, stop by the manager's office and maybe we can find out who owns that house now.
I put the bank on it.
I had to see if we could record a transfer of property to the bank's name. And when the construction department contacted the lender, attorney, when the construction department contacted the attorney representing the lender, they were told that they no longer had a dependent action plan yet.
So that the owner, the owner takes it back, the owner's taking it back somehow?
They were able to resolve their issues with the bank personally.
Are the owners taking that house back?
So, so we're gonna have to issue summonses to the owner again and get him in a court.
Outstanding summons, currently going against the...
Who's gonna, who do I have to see about this?
Maybe I'll ask you for your phone number and I'll contact you directly.
I see some names go like this.
Okay, I'm Laura Pina, this is my mom Elizabeth Gabriel. We own and live in the property that we're talking about on Twenty-Fourth Street. And this is the seventh time in twenty-four years. And it was never this bad and we had over four people. I live on the first floor, my mom is in the basement, everything is there. She's left with the kitchen table and chairs, everything, okay? It was terrible. Entire apartment came in, they shut off the gas, they shut off the toilets, but everything is gone. We have three symptoms, we got a huge French drain, we have drains on the outside. Last year, the same thing happened, almost twenty-eight, we only had about six inches of water. Clean it up, lost a few things, not bad. With free flow of water, nothing, so, nothing. Everything, cabinets, tables, you name it, it's gone. It's not considered a flood according to the insurance because it's water comes straight. So whatever's gone, is gone. Last year, they put in a sewer right outside the driveway, okay? It helps, but we're in Frederick Street, where where the old friendly house used to be, so we're across from that. So first of all, we're on a curve. So the water that comes in, since it's a curve, goes down. Our driveway is the only one on the block that goes down. Which means that all the water that comes off the street, because that is not enough drain, will come into the curve first because it doesn't go straight and ride into my mess. Franklin, Franklin Street is the main cross street, right, where between Franklin and Merckel. That street is higher up than Frederick. So not only do we get Frederick's water, but also, so we're stuck, what, what, what are we doing?
I was talking to, to come in today with the town engineer. I believe that's what could place the county brings that Franklin Street higher. And that's why all those side streets are getting run off. So our, our engineer is supposed to look into it with the county, with the county and see if there's any, anything we can do about. But I agree with you, that street looks higher than, than all those side streets, so...
I don't know if the piping would help, I don't know if it's Belleville or it's newer. Or if we can, I mean, at this point, we're considering closing the garage, just leveling off the driveline and closing the garage.
I visited there.
Well, yeah, now every time they announce rain, we're gonna get, we're gonna get, we're gonna get...
Could you just wait, please, get a report from that engineer, from our engineer to see? I know that street looks higher, let's determine if it is higher and if the county could do something for it. Okay?
The county can do it and the engineer, they made the pipes bigger. Because they did solve a lot of problems there by making those pipes larger so we know where it goes.
Okay.
And, and their, their, their house is legal, three family, they're not living in a basement apartment. I want you to have it direct.
No, I'm just, our biggest, the problem is, I mean, it's, it's a problem because the garage slopes right down and that... We, we did speak to the engineer today and we'll check up and see if he went over and checked and talked to the county. Okay, and then we'll talk about a pipe, okay? Thank you.
Assume that's possible, the cops, so everybody's a little... One more key in the gentleman's bag.
Let me see those, let me see those.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mike Bright, wanna say something? Something about the war of eighteen twelve, Mrs.?
This is next question, Wes. Yeah, I think your last, I think Chris. Um, I'd like to comment and read these Resolution Number Twenty-One. Many people are aware, many people, most people probably aren't aware, that this coming Sunday is the bicentennial of the Star-Spangled Banner, the bombardment of Fort McHenry occurred on the thirteenth and fourteenth. And so, I'd like to read this resolution and make some comments relevant to Belleville. Whereas September eleventh, twenty fourteen commemorates the bicentennial of the great American victory at the Battle of Plattsburgh, New York. And whereas September thirteenth, twenty fourteen marks the bicentennial of the British bombardment of Fort McHenry, the Gulf War, and the writing of the Star-Spangled Banner. And whereas the bombardment of Fort McHenry and the burning of Washington, D.C., which were teaching the divergence by the British Secretary of War, Henry Baffers, from Britain's true military party. Okay, so the bombardment of Fort McHenry was a diversion. They burned down Washington, D.C. and Fort McHenry, it was a diversion. The real British plan was elsewhere. Fort McHenry was bombed for twenty-five hours, two and a half thousand bombs in twenty-five hours. And four American soldiers were killed in the fort. No British were killed because the British fleet was out of range of the fort. It was just a diversion. The real action was taking place in New York State. Whereas on September sixth, eighteen fourteen, the largest military attack on the United States began when the British Army of fifteen thousand veteran troops comprised primarily of regiments of the Duke of Wellington and supported by a large British fleet attached to the United States Army base station at Plattsburgh, New York and United States Navy Fleet in Plattsburgh Bay. Okay, fifteen thousand soldiers in eighteen fourteen would be equivalent to six hundred thousand soldiers invading the United States today. Whereas the commander of the United States Army at Plattsburgh was Brigadier General Alexander MacComb and the commander of the United States Navy Fleet was Lieutenant Thomas McDonna. And whereas the size of the American Army at Plattsburgh was fifteen hundred, therefore being outnumbered ten to one. And the American fleet is smaller than the British fleet. And whereas General Alexander MacComb dismissed some practical suggestions to retreat and fight another day, General MacComb said, fortune always favors brave. Now, if you're outnumbered ten to one by a real army, General MacComb's army, half of the men were ill and injured. They had been left in Plattsburgh because the main army had actually marched west. So you're outnumbered more than ten to one, I mean, really much more than ten to one. These people thought they were going to die that day. But General MacComb said, fortune always favors brave. Whereas General MacComb's troops, troops was reinforced by militia volunteers from New York and Vermont as well as twenty schoolboys from the Plattsburgh Academy. These were twenty boys, brain age from fourteen to sixteen, that were given rifles and formed a rifle company. And they fought for five days, one of them was killed. But the American manpower was so weak, so low, they had no choice, they took whoever came. And these, these twenty boys were called Atkins Volunteers. And actually, ten years after the war, Congress awarded each one of these boys a rifle with their name on silver plate. Whereas brilliant naval maneuvering by Lieutenant McDonough resulted in the defeat of the largest, of the larger British fleet. And courageous fighting by General MacComb's troops resulted in the return of the British Army and making back to Canada. Without the, without the fleet, the British did not supply the troops. Once the fleet was defeated, they had no choice. Whereas President Madison promoted General MacComb to the rank of Major General and the Congressional Gold Medal was awarded to both General MacComb and Lieutenant McDonough for facing an enemy vastly superior in number. That was a congressional resolution. Whereas in nineteen, in eighteen twenty-eight, President John Quincy Adams appointed MacComb to America's highest military office, commanding general of the United States Army. Whereas General MacComb died in office in eighteen forty-one and was given a state, was given a state funeral and led by President John Tyler and former President Adams, who is in turn, okay, this was a huge state funeral. President John Tyler, former President John Quincy Adams led the funeral procession. And MacComb was buried in the Congressional Cemetery in Washington. His thirteen-foot monument in the cemetery is considered as most unique. It's, has a Spartan helmet as a patent to, in remembrance of the famous ancient Greek, the famous ancient battle of Peripyle, where the Greeks, three hundred Greeks held off the entire Persian army. So as a tribute to MacComb, they put a Spartan helmet on his monument. Whereas General MacComb, as a youth, came to be a resident of Belleville, New Jersey in seventeen ninety-five and was married to Catherine MacComb of Belleville on June eighteenth, eighteen oh-three, in Christ Church, then on Main Street. And General MacComb and his family lived at one twenty-five Main Street, Belleville, where they raised their... And General Macomb's family lived at 125 Main Street Belleville, where they raised their family. And in 1814, in December of 1814, General Macomb, after the victory of Plattsburgh, he came back to Belleville and there was a huge hero as well. The whole town was lit up with bonfires. So Winston Churchill had called the Battle of Plattsburgh, New York, the decisive battle of the War of 1812. And Franklin Roosevelt had called on Congress to have, let the Battle of Plattsburgh celebrated on the National Avenue. Okay, so, you know, this weekend, President Obama, everybody's gonna be in Baltimore and Washington celebrating the bombardment of Fort McHenry. Okay? It's unfortunate that people don't know about the Battle of Plattsburgh, New York because that is considered by military scholars, one of the greatest military victories in American history. President Theodore Roosevelt said back, "Up until the point of the Civil War, the Battle of Plattsburgh, the naval battle, was the greatest battle in American history." So... Yes. The Battle of Platts, the bombardment of Fort McHenry produced a courageous and proud national anthem. The Battle of Plattsburgh, New York produced a courageous and proud nation. Okay, so we have a special gift for the town. For the bicentennial of the Battle of Plattsburgh, the city of Plattsburgh erected a grand-new giant flagpole over the memorial area. And this flagpole is going to be dedicated by the mayor and governor and everybody on Friday. So this is what we have. Approbation from Mayor Tomlin, Mayor of the City of Plattsburgh. This is to certify that the accompanying flag was flown over the city hall adjacent to the Plattsburgh monument on September 5th, 2014, at the request of the Belleville Historical Society. This flag was flown and honored by General Alexander Macomb, Commander of the American Forces at the Battle of Plattsburgh, and in commemoration of the 200th, 200th anniversary of this decisive battle of the War of 1812. So this is...
Can we fly that this weekend?
Yeah, we would actually like to fly it the morning of the 11th if we could get it up. The reason...
Why leave it up all week?
Yeah. Probably leave it up all September.
Yeah.
The 11th is the, the big battle took place on the morning of the 11th. Okay, and this, this flag was flown before, the dedication is Friday, when, when Mayor Tomlin was informed this was for General Macomb's town, he said, "Fly the flag."
So, thank you.
Anyone else? I can't, I just keep...
21. 21 protocol on sale.
Motion closed.
Second.
Councilmember Cosbelli, Kennedy, Longo, Nittori, Robel.
Right motion, move to the Senate, gentlemen.
Second.
I want 21.
15 and... 15, 19.
21. Quick roll, all of you, Senate, gentlemen.
Councilmember Cosbelli?
Yeah.
Cosbelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nittori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Resolution number?
15.
15. Quick roll, 15. Right motion, move it.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosbelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
No.
Nittori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
No.
Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Resolution, Dr.
Move Resolution 19.
Make a motion to table.
Second. Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosbelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nittori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell? The resolution's stated.
Resolution. Move Resolution 21.
Second. Yeah, I'm just looking for a roll call and to honor my, I appreciate what you did, Michael. I, you know, we kind of had me for a couple of sentences that it was the War of 1812 that we were dealing with, but I get it.
We have the historical meeting tomorrow to tell the same story.
Oh, no.
Sunday and next Thursday and the following, Thursday before that.
Quick roll.
Means recorded.
Video tape.
Councilmember Cosbelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo? Nittori?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Schumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Campbell?
I just have a couple. I guess it's old business, new business, I don't know, but I wonder where the pines are for the benches at the St. Louis City Park. I got a call from Zarrow, who gave money, and Phil Pesci called Zarrow again into City Park, and the benches are just sitting there, so I did write a letter to you, Mr. Raffas Buzino. Also, on the corner of Cross and Rock Chong, it looks like a forest. I have complained at least six times. They, this has gone on as long as I've been at council board, and nothing is ever done. It's disgraceful. What time you have a little fight on board? Also, I agree with the gentleman over here. I'll be left. They have to pick up the people that don't, you know, with these abandoned houses. I have one on the corner of Mayor and Garden. It's been like that for 14 years. The guy still lives in there. There's no roof. Water's coming in. Needs to be picked up. And the one-way at number four, because that, the street, it is just as bad as school 10, because it's a one-way. The kids, if something ever happened there, somebody had a heart attack, we are in big trouble. And that's all. Thank you.
John?
Have a couple of quick things. The, the hearing that I saw for North's planning board, something that, does that affect us because of the Civil War property?
Yeah.
I, I know we had a problem with erosion in the back of that property. Could you please get a hold of them and, and fix that before, that was one of the big things. And I, I just want to explain to people here, yeah, I have no objection to finding out what it would cost us to tape and to archive and to deal with all the regulations that DARN puts in front of us. But I'd like to know that before I do any type of consideration of voting for that.
Motion, Alex, table.
Okay. I will.
Motion. Also, the general?
Mayor? I have a business. I have a request from the Second Baptist Church for Rock warning on September 13th from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Move it.
Second.
Quick roll.
Councilmember Cosbelli?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Longo?
Yes.
Nittori?
Yes.